Steve Sherlock here for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio, available anywhere, anytime on the internet, wfpr.fm, and in your local Franklin Mass FM radio band 102.9. Yeah, remember the dial or the push buttons you can reset, 102.9. Here today virtually with a school committee candidate for our biennial election coming up November 4th, Ruth Ann O'Sullivan, welcome. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you for doing this. I know you've been working day and night and there's a lot of candidates, so we appreciate you. Hopefully we'll get more views very soon on all of these candidates as it gets closer.
That's the hope. You know, we're using this platform, thanks to TV and radio for enabling that to get your story out. Chloe, the town council is rather competitive with 15 on nine, school committee, okay, it's eight on seven, but there's still some choices because you've lost a couple of people to go on and do some other stuff, which is, that's part of nature, part of human course, especially here in Franklin, life changes, phases of life changing. Other things are happening now, so yeah.
Passing the baton.
Passing the baton. So we'll start at the beginning, and if people don't necessarily know who's Ruth Ann, tell us a little bit about your Franklin story, your road to Franklin, or at least life within Franklin, and your community involvement, and we'll go from there.
Sure. Well, I was a part of the 2019, 2020, bought my house just before the crazy spike in Franklin. I grew up in Natick, was familiar with Franklin. I know Natick and Franklin sort of, you know, transport people back and forth a bit. After college, I moved to New York City and was in the city there. And then when I was relocated for work to expand into the Northeast, I think another candidate had talked about that. I was like, yes. And I think you did too, from New Jersey. So back to Massachusetts and really excited. When my parents had retired, they moved out to Rutland, Mass, which was a little far from Boston for me, having, you know, enjoyed sort of being in that Metro West area. So I came back and I looked at all the towns around us, you know, Halston, Hockington, Franklin, Natick, all that, and just loved Franklin and moved here primarily the schools. I loved it. We have a commuter rail. The black box was a big draw. We had that gem locally. And then, you know, friends and just people I had grown up with sort of settled in the area. So we bought our house here, got in just before the pandemic, and I had switched to virtual. I was at the time working at a law firm in Wellesley and doing estate planning and asset protection. So I, it was a difficult area to be employed in when the pandemic started. Dealing with a lot of, you have really older community members who are dealing with death and tragedy and estate planning and just, we had to be in biohazard suits and at parking lots and against nursing home windows knocking to company people and they had to sign things and trying to teach, you know, widows how to zoom and, but so it was a difficult, but we were sort of, we had to pivot. It was like crisis management. Let's, let's, how do we figure out how to operate? But when the schools didn't open in September, I had to give my notice and I couldn't continue because I had to have homeschool. So I do have two children. They're 13 and 14 now, but they were, when we moved here, second and third grade. So went to Oak Street. And I guess my real engagement in this, the civic, you know, engagement started when we had settled on Franklin and then we were watching school committee. One of the, one of the most remembered, or one of the most remembered meetings, I think, was when Dr. Amberger was on the football field because we did it outside during COVID. And she was pleading for adequate funding. I want to say the word that she used was adequate too. It wasn't even any sort of like pie in the sky type of verbiage, but I, I sort of gave it a second look and said, what's going on? What do you mean? So, so then I just, you know, began emailing back and forth, the town council. I met with Glenn Jones right away. I met with Al Charles right away. They were, they were, you know, already kind of involved in, in their roles. And met with Jamie Helen a couple of times. And, and, you know, I had looked into the school budget. To me, I was comparing it to other towns. It looked very comparable. It didn't look like there was anything, you know, extravagant going on in Franklin. So I was like, why aren't we having an override? It sounds like we need an override. Wasn't there a committee that started in 2019? And I was sort of just driving people a little nutty with that and started organizing parents around, you know, what that would take to organize and get a movement started. Because I was told, we can't have an override. There's no grassroots movement. We need the citizens to do it. So I did my research and looked into what does it take to start a grassroots movement? And then I just said, well, I guess I'll do it. Like, you know, I, I recently became unemployed and I have these kids homeschools and, you know, I'm not sort of using my, my brain in that way. So let's, let's see what I can do to get the schools some funding. And the next thing I knew, it was, it was sort of something that was already being discussed and pioneered by Roberta Trahan and, you know, obviously Dr. Bergen. And so I had contacted them and met with them and, and that's sort of how I became involved. And next thing I knew, I was running for school committee. It was sort of, you know, you and I talked about all the candidates that are running and we do have eight running for school committee. That's exciting because I remember when I was asked to run, there were three open spots and it was, it was almost time for the ballots to be ordered. So they said, you're doing the work anyway. Come on, get in there and advocate for the schools. So, so I did. And I, I helped recruit a couple more people. Erin Gallagher, who we are losing to the museum, which Paul Gervis was somebody I, I encouraged and talked into coming on board, which I'm psyched that he came on board too. So I like, I like bringing people together, you know, just having conversations. Lot of in-home gatherings and rallies and, you know, postcard writing and door knocking and holding signs and trying to engage the community. And, and that's my Franklin story. So I've been part of the overrides in town, which, you know, we've lost twice, but they were close calls and it is hard to get an override passed, especially Franklin, after learning the history. So I'm, I'm excited to continue the work. I think we've done some big, big things in the school committee and I'm enjoying the work that we're doing. And I've learned quite a bit. And I think that the schools need continued advocacy. So that's my story.
Yeah, we've been seeing each other for a lot of meetings, certainly on the school committee side, as in my reporting role, and other events, certainly as part of the override campaign, et cetera. So related to that, civil discourse, as you were, certainly is a key component of our democratic republic form of government. And the political divide is specifically on the national level, certainly is leading to unfortunate, I think, a wider divide here amongst the locals, which is unfortunate because, I mean, Chloe, in a local election, we're nonpartisan. There's no party tags when you're running for a school committee, town council, et cetera. So the question then is, as an individual, what can and would you do to help either bridge the divide or help avoid the divide going forward?
Sure, sure. Great question, because it bothers me so much that this is even happening at a national level. I was just talking to a couple of friends of mine about this, how when, when you have people in your life that are just consistently talking about national politics, I always, you know, challenge them to ask them, who are your town counselors that you're, where you live and on your school committee where you live? And if they can't answer that, I'm like, it's, it's, it's the tabloids then. It's, it's not, it's not, you know, so I, here in town, you know, social media is, is, can be really damaging to just social, you know, public discourse. I think there's a lot of misinformation on social media and things like that. So that's a problem everywhere. I think that ultimately, national politics doesn't have a place in local politics, really, because we're not deciding on major issues around, you know, you know, things like abortion or things like, you know, I don't know what the hot topics are right now, but it's, it's, there's a lot of discourse. And in Franklin, we just want clean water. We want, you know, good schools. We want to retain the good teachers we have. We want to not have potholes giving us flat tires. And we want the police fire to show up when we call them and we want to have safe community. And so I think that ultimately, conversations and dialogue and just being open, I will say what I will do personally, and I owe Jane a call. I just tracked down Jane Tripp's number because she and I will message over Facebook and we've been trying to get together to just kind of go over school budget things because I want to loop her in and give her more insight, given how much civic engagement. But Jane couldn't have been a more vocal voice for the no side of this override and when I was on the yes side. But when I see Jane, we have completely kind, engaging conversations. And I think that, you know, Jane is somebody that I would like to see on the council too, you know, I would. I would like to see, I like that she shows up and she is engaged and she questions and she's brave and she does her work. And, you know, she'll get grief once in a while for having a number wrong here or there, but that's why I surround myself with people smarter than me consistently. I'm not, no one's perfect. So I am, I think leading by example in that way and extending an olive branch to somebody who might have an opposing opinion, because there's no way, I think, that the people who, for example, the biggest divide in Franklin would be what? The yes no voters right now, right? On the, I think the people who voted no don't, don't want our schools to fail. You know, it's, it's one of two reasons. It's one, they don't trust the money will go where they want it to, or they don't have the money. So I, you know, there's, there's people like Max Morangello, who's running for town council, who went out and advocated for tax discounts for seniors in need and got it and got it to be more aggressive than it would have been otherwise without his advocacy. So I was really encouraging that because that's one of the ways that Norwood, which was sort of a model, they have sort of a fund to kind of supplement for, for the community that's, you know, hurting and then not able to afford the override. So I think, I think you have to meet people where they're at and, and assume good intent. And just discuss policy from there.
Agreed, because yeah, ultimately, it's just us. And we may be close neighbors or far neighbors, but we're all neighbors and we need to figure it out somehow.
Yeah, this is local stuff. It's not rocket science. It's math and, and values. And we should be pretty aligned for the most part in those things.
Yeah. So you alluded to some of your experience and background professionally, work-wise. You can draw on that or whatever else might help bring to the table as you come to serve on the school committee, as you have already. Or another way to phrase it, what do you bring to the table that perhaps either would help set you apart from others or enable that coordination, collaboration on the school committee itself?
Sure. I have a legal and finance background. When I was, you know, growing up, I, I was a figure skater. I, I was training, well, you know, training like every kid dreams for the 1996 Olympics. But I took it pretty far. When I was 15, I actually was living with my coaches over in Vail, Colorado. And, and with Nancy Kerrigan and Paul Wiley and people, and I had real aspirations. I'm pretty, I'm pretty tenacious when, like a dog with a bone. Like when I see injustice or I see, you know, a problem that I think I can solve and it's, it doesn't make sense why we're not solving it. It's, it's like I can't turn off my brain. So I have a little bit of that competitive drive to achieve and succeed. So those overrides killed me. But, but I do have hope for Franklin. And here I am. I get back up again, right? So that's kind of a telltale sign that of resilience. But I would say also, I was in banking. I was in New York City, went there right after school. And during the recession, I was an A paper lender. I wasn't part of that subprime. We didn't sell our loans on the secondary market for anybody who's financially savvy. But I had an opportunity to expand into the Northeast and took that opportunity to relocate back to here. So right around that was the 2008 recession. So I was part of a layoff, but I was happy I was back here. And leaned into my paralegal background. So I have a, I'm a legal paralegal also. And, and that's, that's the road I went, just because the, the banking industry was sort of in flux. And so I, I, I enjoy policy now more than I ever thought I would in the private sector. What I've found the most frustrating in the public sector is how much you can see how to solve a problem, but to get the buy-in of the community is such a challenge. People aren't listening. So this engagement question that keeps coming up has always been a challenge. So just, I'm somebody who invites people into my home constantly. If you talk to, I don't think there's maybe one or two town counselors that maybe haven't been in my living room, just, you know, hearing about what the parents that I am with are concerned about or, so I think, I think I'm willing to show up and I'm also willing to take action. And I'm also willing to admit that I don't know everything and seek information needed to figure things out. So I, I, much like I, you know, credit Obama for surrounding himself with brilliant people. I'm never the smartest person in the room. There's people that I rely on to give me insights about budget. There's people I rely on to give me insights about policy language. And I just, I like to think that I'm open to feedback, to pivoting and to learning and, and evolving. So it's been a big lesson the past couple of years. I also bring to the table my background, you know, I'm not just all about the schools because my kids are in the schools and I need the schools to be great. Because I know that's sort of the, the narrative out there sometimes, like when your kids get there, like past the baton, it's your turn to be tortured and be part of the school committee. But, you know, going into this, I was first the one Franklin organizer. That was who I primarily was. That's what motivated me to get involved. So I did the work. I met with Chief Lynch and Chief McGoughlin and, you know, the GPW directors and union presidents and just wanted to make sure that the schools, you know, we knew that our budget was tight. You know, you talked to Kenajuku, who's one of the town council candidates, who showed up at the budget subcommittee, wondering what's going on with the schools? Why is my daughter's favorite teacher getting laid off? And then, you know, he, he's like an MIT grad and he does like numbers for a living too. He's, he's looking at the budget going, there's, there's no room. What are we doing as a town? So that's how he ended up, you know, with me on this mission. And I kind of did the same thing. I just, I didn't see any wiggle room. And I knew that our superintendent wouldn't want to be the villain. A lot of times the departments are sort of, when there's scarcity, they're almost put against each other in a political, and it's, and it's hard to watch. And so I've, I know the needs of the police station. I feel bad that the turnout, looking at the, the new police station was so poor because they're trying to get people engaged. I would love to have people into the schools to see some of the challenges that we have. So I, I feel their pain. But I've, I've, I've familiarized myself, I think, beyond what a school committee member typically does with other departments and their needs. Educated myself. So I do think that helps as far as ultimately, you know, ultimately we're sort of courting the town council to make sure we get that budget that we would like and that we need, more so need right now. You know, back in the day, we might have been pushing for some, you know, more enrichment ideas and innovations, but right now we're just trying to keep our head above water. So it's critical that we're able to communicate with the town council and have those open dialogues, which I've always been. I have them all on speed dial on my phone. I drive them crazy too. So love me or hate me. I'm here and I show up.
Thank you for that, definitely. So now for the, for reference as well, for the listeners, if you haven't, if you have just joined us for this one, you may not be aware that all the candidates did get all the questions in advance so we could have a nice thoughtful conversation. There's no trick questions here, as you may have heard so far. All candidates got three questions the same. And then candidates based upon the role get the next set of questions different. So school committee will be different from town council, different from planning board respectfully. So for the school committee questions, with the redistricting decision now behind us and a lot of work still to be done, what do you see as the key priority for the district?
I'm going to stay on brand here and adequate funding is going to be everything. I mean, we have done as much work around efficiencies as we've been able to uncover. Like we have closed schools. These are concessions. We have maximized our class sizes. We have imposed fees on parents that are extraordinary. You know, $1,000 to play football, like it's, it's $600 to run. Like I got a, you know, joking parent the other day who said, oh, my kid decided to not do cross-country because I was like, sure you want to do this? I mean, I'm paying $600 for you to run through the woods. And I was like, oh, that pierces my heart that your kid just wants to join cross-country and now you're, you haven't have a conversation like, are you sure you're committed to this? Because we want kids to just try whatever they want to try. So I think that at this point, you know, we're, our budget is very, very efficient. So I know that we've heard dialogue around declining enrollment, sort of coming back into the narrative, which was a really strong push from the council to us to do something big, you know? And it had taken us a few years of audits and, and trying to figure out what are we going to do? How are we going to make this work? And it was voted down once because it was just a tiny piece of the puzzle and we wanted to just do it in a, in a real thoughtful way in its entirety. And we've done that. So now I just think the priority needs to be educating our leadership and our, and our community, especially those that aren't stakeholders around how efficient our budget is and what the real cost drivers of education are. They're not, they're not things like, you know, frivolous field trips or classes running with only 12 kids or, you know, lofty admins, you know, we've heard some accusations and some, some information rhetoric in the town and we're, we're light, maybe on par with most admin teams. So it's like we, I invite people in to see the budget. Some of the people that you've mentioned or that you've met with via town council, the candidates, I've listened to their interviews and I hear people that maybe weren't as tuned in to why the people on the yes side of this override were pushing so hard. Because I think the biggest push for this override came from people who really understand that the schools have been eroded relative to what their kids experienced, you know? You know, I know I listened this morning to Malloy and LeBlanc and they, LeBlanc was talking about how his first born kid was just born and Malloy was talking about his kids in their 30s. So I can almost guarantee that the, what they were given in an education was, was superior to what we're getting now. It's just, so, and I, and I say that with hesitation because this is the, this is the conundrum of, of school committee is how do we show what's been eroded and what is, you know, lacking in competitiveness or bringing our rankings down and things that people don't love to talk about, while still giving credit to the people that are leading our schools who are outstanding? You know, people like our superintendent, we just signed for six years. It's one of my proudest things that I've been involved in, in this community. Like we got that guy for six years. Other districts are going to come after. He just did a massive redistrict, led us through two overrides that were just exhausting to even watch. And the leadership team, when they get in front of us, I get giddy of the result of the redistricting and who we have right now that has stuck with us through this. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty optimistic about the people that we have in place, if we can just give them the tools that they need. So bridging that divide and clarifying some, some misinformation out there, that's, you know, it is tough when you're the biggest budget. So I know that's the next question, right, is about, you know, we are the biggest budget, but I think budget's always going to be my, my biggest concern because I do think we've got a team in place right now that is outstanding. And there's some courses that I would, would argue are necessary to bring back and there's some investments we should be making. But we, we've done quite a bit of work with efficiency and I love, we invited George Connolly and George actually, I love George. So he sort of ruined my April vacation last year because, as you know, our town administrator drops the budget narrative the Friday before April vacation, every Friday, when all the educators go away. And so I'm away. I was in Myrtle Beach last year. The year before that, I was in Disney. I did that like epic pandemic Disney trip. And, and then they're like, what, why does, what, you know, we're, we're not going to get enough money this year. What's going to happen? And, and we heard George Connolly during that week say something about they haven't redistricted yet. What's going on over there? And it's, it's like, we just came out of a pandemic. We have, we have to do this right. You can't just close schools as you saw. It's a political nightmare. It's one of the hardest things a school district can do. But, but I just, you know, shot him an email, reached out to him and was like, hey, George, I know this is bothering you. Come on in. He met with Dr. Dutch, who was our business administrator at the time. I'm at that meeting like, oh my God, you guys need money. The schools need money. He was such a good advocate for the override. So the more I can get people who are like, like Malloy, he's an accountant. He has a great financial background. He ran massive firms at scale, accounting. If I get him with our business admin and our superintendent, if I can facilitate a meeting like that and bring them together, I'm, I have all the confidence in the world that they'll see why we've, we've, we've tightened the belt over here. And now we got to look at what we're going to do.
Yeah, because I think one of the key points, there's certainly the list of things that have been cut over the years, going back to what, 2003 or something like that. And it's hard to quantify exactly what that is because in some cases it was, you know, funding, in some cases was teachers, but ultimately it was programs and education. And yeah, I've been doing this since 2006, 2007, because I was realizing that the budget cuts were there. And what my, what education my daughters were getting, who graduated in 2004 and 2006, the kids today are not getting. They're still getting good education, but they're not getting the level of what we had. And that's going to be the, still the concern going forward without advocating. But if you just look at, and I think it's what, 85% personnel, 15%, you know, things, very similar to the police department, very similar to the fire department. Chloe, DPW swings the other way because they've got so much material. Theirs is more what, 60, 40? And if the numbers are off, they may be off a fraction of a percent. But there, there's been, there's only so much you can cut without really drastically changing services. And we saw it recently with the third ambulance. It's taken six months to bring the third ambulance back online because the two people that were cut had not been hired. So they need to go out to the market, hire them, get them trained and bring them on, et cetera. Yeah. How much more are we going to do? And when are we going to decide that what is the level of service we want to pay for, no matter what it costs? And we've just talked, schools, police, fire, you got senior center, library, yada, yada, yada. There's the entire set of town services, never mind school side. So there's a bunch of challenges ahead, which is why we need to make good votes when it comes in November. So yeah, we were talking, getting into kind of the budget question. It's certainly the logic. And I think you covered a bunch of things there, but do you have any other ideas in regards to how we help resolve this kind of structural deficit?
Right. I think that it's important that we point out that with the redistricting and the, the massive moves that were made and the work that was undertaken, it did save 3.7 million for the town. So, you know, that was, that was a big win and it was a difficult challenge. We are-
We should reemphasize that specifically because it's 3.7 million forever, not just one year, right? Because that money is gone. Some structural people are no longer there because of efficiencies with the redistricting, the new buildings, et cetera.
Yeah. Well, and it's interesting because to go back to the declining enrollment question, all that does is hurt us because we get a per pupil amount times how many students are coming to the school. As soon as those students, if we lose 50 students in a year, that, that funding's gone immediately. Those, if those efficiencies that maybe are created from some, some opportunity for more bandwidth for somebody because of class size or something, it's, it's now going to be able to be felt in a way that's going to be easier because we can shift people within schools. Before, it was a lot more difficult because we lose a couple of third graders here, a couple of fourth graders here. Like we can't just lay off a teacher and, and, and save a salary. And, and nor did, nor did districts do that every year when it ebbs and flows a bit. So, you know, we've, with, with declining enrollment, I think people think we're going to save money, but it's really just costing us state funding, which is, which is- Which is, was just a tough, tough thing to do. So you know, we've, we've sort of had to save ourselves a bit, you know, without, without being able to pass these overrides, the redistricting created this, this, this revenue for us to be able to utilize for the town. And it also created efficiencies that will be more sustainable going forward because of that fact. So when enrollment ebbs and flows. And it, and it's sort of, you know, reaching its, you know, it's sort of like an hourglass. It's getting to the narrowest point entering high school now. But it was, it was so vast, so huge. It was bigger than the high school could actually manage. So we're just getting to a place where we actually can fit the kids that we have in the high school. And then, you know, if you look at the first, first graders and second and kindergarten, that those are big again. You know, we had a class with twenty-six kindergarteners last year. And, you know, one of the cuts years ago was teachers, was kindergarten aides. So it becomes like unmanageable. And, and we really start to look like a city when we want to look like a town according to, you know, master plan and things that we are getting from the town council side, you know, open spaces and recreation. So, you know, the ECDC, which is the Early Childhood Development Center that is run through the school district, that is now expanding to where the Kennedy complex, where the Kennedy School was. And that's to be a revenue generator, which will be helpful. And, you know, there's been discussions, one of the things that through communication with the town council, some of the ideas would be, I've talked to some of the candidates. If we put a hiring freeze in place, if we're in a structural deficit and we agree that no department will hire, if that means that your operation budget will exceed two and a half percent that year, then you don't hire. We can't continue to grow when we are in a deficit. And the schools could certainly manage that. So I, I just, I did some numbers. I know you know Sue Dusnap, so she used to be the chair of FinCom for twelve years and at the growth of the departments over the years. And schools have grown in the past ten years, like four point six percent or so. Emergency services have grown just over six percent. You know, Chief Lynch would say, you know, they're finally fully staffed after the numbers that they needed in two thousand and now they finally got staffed. So they grow
That was prior to the cuts they just had from the failed override.
Right, right. They had to get an emergency officer. So it's a double whammy. And, and then general government has grown nine percent. And, you know, with more people managing money comes more efficiencies. You know, there's arguments to be made about different investments in town, but I think as we enter the structural deficit and we don't have the ability to do an override, you know, at least in the immediate future, because the voters have spoken, then I've been discussing this policy. I also have been discussing a set allocation for the schools. I have a policy drafted. There were citizens that wanted to do it by petition during this election that we were like, whoa, 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 we gotta, let's wait and talk to the council and, and do this, you know? With the community involved and, and it doesn't, we don't want it to look like a money grab by the schools. We want to just give our superintendent a predictable amount because school budgets just, they, they ebb and flow and they have cost drivers that I think people overlook, you know, things like special education and transportation. And we carry our healthcare on our operational budget and other departments don't. And there can be an argument made that that could help us if, if healthcare was you know, over projected and, and, and came in less, which I don't know that that happens often, but there's
Not recently anyway.
There's, we're just, we're not keeping pace with inflation and, and last year at the joint budget, the kickoff of the joint budget subcommittee meetings, which happened September eleventh. I had asked Bob Dutch, Dr. Dutch, who was our business administrator in the schools to come up and just talk about in his experience, the growth of school budgets, that they're, they're three and a half, four and a half percent a year. They don't live within that two and a half percent. So we have to figure out a way for the schools to have a predictable allocation where they don't feel beholden to, you know, our superintendent, he doesn't report to the town administrator. He does definitely, they have to work together. But you don't want, you want the superintendent creating a budget that's adequate without pressure about what's available. That's been my only, you know, when we do our superintendent evaluations, I, I can't, I can't speak more highly of our superintendent. The one concern I always put on that evaluation is I'm, I'm concerned that you've been sort of, you've grown up in a culture of scarcity. And it's unfortunate because I want to be able to convey to the community what's at stake here and what, what are our kids, you know, gonna miss out on? So it's a delicate balance to, to continue to, to be proud of our schools and, and just the, the amazing achievements of these kids and still advocate that we've really lost ground. So it's, it's, I think it's going to take a little bit of town council policy and town council relations. I think it's critical that the towns show up to this election. If they care about the schools and the funding that we get, their voices have to be heard because the town council, they, you know, I don't know what the perception is going to be of the new town council, but we are the biggest budget. So it is sometimes I think easier to just say, oh, it won't hurt them as much. But boy, are we efficient? We are tight as can be right now. So I, I don't know where, I mean, we are right now not running things. I'm getting calls about kids that you know, aren't getting what they want in classes and offerings and clubs. So we're already below what I would think is adequate for the schools. We've already made too many cuts. So I don't know what the answer is. I thought the answer was the override, but I think if we can gain some trust and some education, just continue this conversation. You know, we'll fix it.
Eventually, we have to somehow. Yeah. Or live with the consequences. Those are the two choices. Yeah. So while we've had clearly a budget focused discussion, but we've discussed a bunch of other things as well. If there's another topic that you'd like to weigh in on or just, you know, we've got the opportunity, voters, residents are listening, they can make your final pitch, so to speak.
I just want to invite people to reach out to me. You know, I've had many, many, many meetings with, with people in the community. Just, you know, you reach out to me, you ask me a question. If I can, I'm happy to go have a coffee at Birchwood and, and catch up to speed on some of the things that the schools are doing. And I think that the vote this time around is going to be so impactful. You know, it's going to impact our kids. It's going to impact our home values. We're sort of at a tipping point in town. And I don't like to boo hoo other towns, but there's, there's rhetoric out there like, you know, are we going to become this town or we're going to become this town? And I know that people don't like the building. I don't know as much about that area. I just know that we, if we're not going to pass overrides, we gotta figure out how to grow in a way that the people will accept. And I know there's been advocacy again for easier accessory dwellings in order to kind of expand on, you know, people's own personal single families, letting college kids come back and stay there for a bit. You know, aging parents, things like that. Economic development. I know that we have a heck of a time getting those downtown, you know, storefronts filled and and it's, it's going to be a tough problem to solve, but we could have to figure out how to bring more revenue into this town. Or we're really going to suffer. And, and I don't want to leave on a bad note. So I want to invite this school, the town counselors who are out there and are maybe getting involved in this because they're upset about the building. That's a big contingency right now. You know, the, the sort of anti incumbent movement that we hear. Just, I caution people to just still vet your counselors, talk to them, find out what their values are, find out where they're gonna, you know, vote on issues that you care about. And I invite them to come talk to me because anybody who thinks that the schools need to go line by line and tighten up the belt and get creative, I promise you, you know, I welcome feedback. We are desperate for, you know, advice on that front, but I believe that you'll find that we, we, we don't have wiggle room and we're going to have to figure something else out besides cutting the schools. So I really want to invite people to come and, and I will facilitate meetings. I know our superintendent is, is a tough guy to pin down. But if it has to do with adequately funding our schools and supporting the kids of Franklin, he will make time. I know he will. So I will help facilitate those meetings and correspond and communicate and get people the information they need about our budget. And, and I, I know as a school committee, we can't make endorsements, but as a member of this community, I am highly, highly supporting Max Morangello, Caroline Griffith and Kenajuku. I haven't made up my mind about everybody else yet. I have a fondness, very much so for Patrick Sheridan, as he's a history teacher and and he understands, you know, what, what we've been up against. And I like having that representation. But those three people are particularly concerned about our schools. And that is, that is my purview. So, you know, I care about other departments. I don't think, you know, successive schools should come at the, you know, expense of other departments, but we have to figure out a way to, to take care of our, our schools.
Thank you for that. Cause as I said before, we are in it together. We need to figure it out. So thank you for adding your voice to this so the folks can make an informed vote on or before November fourth. I'll put a quick reminder in that as we're recording this this week, the ballots should be back to the town clerk. She'll start doing the mail out. So that for those who have requested mail ballots, they'll start becoming available over the long weekend. And then early voting starts Friday, October seventeenth. And it'll continue through the Tuesday, November fourth, when voting is at the high school is open from six AM through eight PM. So thank you for taking time today to share your story and your passion. We appreciate that. That's something people have said, are you gonna run? No, no, I'm not gonna run. I much prefer doing this. I'm much more comfortable. But I appreciate you and every other candidate because we still need you to be in those roles, making decisions on our behalf. So thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you.
And to the listeners, thank you for doing this. Quick reminder, we do this because Franklin matters.
This program was made possible by your Franklin friends and neighbors, good folks just like you. Thanks for supporting Franklin TV. Thanks for watching.